Regular meeting number 51 will not come to order. Can we please stand for the playing of the National Anthem? President Proton, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening council is pleased and welcome Bishop Herman Dean Ware Jr., Senior Pastor for Oakley Full Baptist Church. He will pray with us. Pastor, welcome back to council.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this time. We thank you for this area that we can come and conduct your business, Father. We pray your blessings on our leaders. God help them to have wisdom and encourage their hearts to do things properly and orderly. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy Stenziano Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to a Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to a Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not this time.
Are there any resolutions by members of council? Councilmember Elizabeth Brown.
Thank you, Council President Harden. I do have a resolution. Could Ms. Jennifer LaPlas please approach the podium? I have Resolution 0293X-2018 to recognize Jennifer LaPlas for being named the 2019 Teacher of the Year from State Board of Education District 6. Thank you so much for being here tonight, Ms. LaPlas, and congratulations. It is always a pleasure to highlight and recognize the outstanding work of our teachers at Columbus City Schools who go above and beyond as they educate and motivate their students. You were nominated for this award by your peers at Centennial, by your principal at Centennial High School, and needless to say, they have glowing praise. From a focus on the individual needs of all your students, to utilizing technology and innovative ways, to connecting your students with resources and opportunities like the YMCA Youth and Government, your work teaching history, humanities, and advanced government courses has a tremendous impact. It is not an exaggeration to say that your work is part of the foundation of our democracy as you help your students understand the importance of civic engagement and as you truly help fold our future, mold, excuse me, our future leaders. When you and I were speaking in the hallway, you mentioned that what motivated you to want to become a teacher and teach government was your own eighth grade history teacher. And I think that says it all. The impact that teachers can have on each of us, I know that I can name those special teachers in my education that helped inspire me to do, to follow my dreams. I know that probably every council member up here can do the same. So we're very lucky to have you working with our students, and congratulations again. Seeing no comment from my colleagues, I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Ms. LaPlas, the microphone's yours.
Thank you very much to the Columbus City Council. It is my honor and pleasure every single day to work in Columbus City Schools for the 21 years that I've worked there. Teaching government, teaching history, which is my passion and my love, I hope I bring that every single day to my students. But I'm one of 4,000-plus teachers that work in Columbus City Schools, so hard every single day to help our kids, because they're our kids and our families. It's just a pleasure to work for Columbus City Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mitch Brown. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you, Council President Harden. I do not have any resolutions this evening, however, I do have an announcement. We're excited to announce that the commencement of the City of Columbus's 27th Annual Combined Charitable Campaign is underway. To date, City of Columbus employees have contributed over $5.1 million through the Combined Charitable Campaign to support charitable organizations right here in our community. The 2018 campaign kicks off today, October 8th, and runs through November 16th. This year's campaign goal is $206,000. There are 158 local agencies listed in this year's guide. Employees may also choose an agency of their choice to contribute to. You do not have to give a lot to make a big difference. For just $4 per month, it provides 10 weeks of lunches for a homeless person, it buys 25 bags of groceries for low-income families, and it can provide diabetes risk tests for 500 individuals. Contributions can be conveniently be made through payroll deductions. City employees can also elect to donate more when spread over a 12-month period, which will ensure that agencies receive contributions year-round to provide quality service. No matter how you choose to give, or how much, please give. Thank you, Council President Harden. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Page.
Thank you, President Harden. This evening I do have a Resolution 0295X-2018 to commemorate the leadership of Reverend John Edgar and to congratulate him on being named Homeport's 2018 Voice and Vision Award recipient. I'd like to ask Reverend Edgar and his wife to come down to the podium. You are welcome too. And Reverend Edgar is no stranger to the city council, no stranger to the city, and you are being recognized for the amazing work that you are doing. Community Development for Our People is a faith-based, multifaceted community development corporation with the mission of improving the quality of life of persons living on the South Side. And also CD4 All People and their partners have invested over $70 million in affordable housing. Their goal is to create a sustainable, mixed-income community with opportunities for all. CD4 All People operates a variety of health and wellness initiatives, including efforts to reduce infant mortality, providing free clothing and household items, and offering youth development programming. I would first like to ask if there are any additional comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for adoption of this resolution.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Reverend Edgar, the floor is now yours.
Well, thank you very much for this wonderful honor. I particularly appreciate the way in which so much of what we do in this city that moves us forward is in pilot, private-public partnerships, and the way in which the faith community is also at the center of that. So as I stand before you, I am just grateful for what we are all able to do together. Obviously, the City of Columbus is taking major steps forward to tackle the problems of affordable housing. As each of you know, we have 54,000 households that are extremely cost-burdened and are not able to afford decent housing. But because of what you are doing with the private community, we're making steps forward. So I just want to express my appreciation to each of you, certainly to the Department of Development and Director Shoney and Rita Priest in the Housing Division. We are finding ways to build sustainable, mixed-income communities. It isn't easy, but it is possible, and I'm grateful to be part of this effort with so many others. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. President Proton.
Thank you, President Harden. Just briefly, as the ranking Italian-American on Columbus City Council, I'd like to take a minute to thank the Columbus Biavie Club for their hard work in this past week, starting with the Columbus Fest feast last Monday, their work with the Columbus Italian Festival, and today's Reef Lane Ceremony. As always, the Stenziano family, and I think many of council members and residents of the City of Columbus, really enjoyed the effort and activities. The weather's always helpful, as are Buckeye Winds, and so really appreciated the spirit and the opportunity for so much camaraderie of our Italian-American Central Ohio residents. I think we all also offer our congratulations to Ten TVs Dom Tiberi and Deb Doudal Roberts for being recognized for their outstanding leadership, advocacy, and dedication at the Reef Lane Ceremony. And just more globally, as we've talked a lot about Columbus Day this past week, I think we recognize that Columbus can also represent discovery and the impact that Italian-Americans have had, economic opportunities for our city and identity, and so look forward to those discoveries to continue. Thank you, President Harden.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you. I have one resolution, and I'm going to ask Ramani Hunter, and if her board member wants to come to the podium, please join her. Its Resolution 0294X-2018 is to congratulate the Kingdom Image Awards on its fifth anniversary, honoring artists and promoting unity within the Christian community. Whereas the Kingdom Image Awards was created as an annual event recognizing the work and musical contributions of inspirational artists within local communities. Whereas some of the Kingdom Image Awards' core beliefs and values include an ongoing belief in the dream and the dreamer, the belief in creating an environment where individuals can be their best, valuing inspiration through the arts, a belief in creating opportunities for others to network. And whereas Kingdom Image Awards also recognizes the importance of creating opportunities for individuals to become empowered, creating a platform for the holistic development of individuals for empowerment and entrepreneurship, producing a product of excellence, providing a climate that supports personal development, education, as well as identifying cross-generational resources while valuing organizational and personal integrity aligned with Christian principles. And whereas the Kingdom Image Awards continues to provide an inspirational national platform allowing artists, again, to operate in a network, collaborate, and identify resources for support. And where the Kingdom Image Awards is a 501(c)(3) organization committed to advancing artists by providing resources and hosting educational forums and workshops for personal and career development. And whereas the Kingdom Image Awards will host its fifth anniversary celebration, bringing artists together through a variety of creative and elegant events, beginning with Choir Fest to be held Friday, October 12th at 7:30 at the Church of Christ Apostolic Faith located on 1200 Bretton Avenue, and its award celebration will be held Saturday, October 13th at the Lincoln Theater. And be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus that this council does hereby congratulate the Kingdom Image Awards on its fifth anniversary, honoring artists and promoting unity within the Christian community. I move for adoption.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Ms. Hunter, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you to the council. With me is Executive Board Member Dewayne Butler, and we take privilege and excitement into bringing our community together, as well as showcasing the artistry of performing arts regardless of their background. We're honored that we have over 15 states represent Case, Columbus, Ohio. This year, this weekend, actually, we'll have two honorees. They are familiar to the Columbus community with Mr. John Gregory, honoring him for his community leadership, and then Bishop Roger Hairston for his legacy in the arts and music arts specifically. We are excited. This is our fifth year. Again, we're growing and expanding and showcasing what Columbus has to offer. Councilmember Page has been an attendant as well, and I encourage you to support nonprofit performing arts artistry in our local faith-based community. Thank you.
If there are questions or comments, thank you again on bringing your resolution. Thank you. Congratulations. I also want to bring to the podium Cheryl Grapanino, who leads our local food action plan at the City of Columbus, and want her to share some good news.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Tyson, Council President Harden, and members of council. I'm pleased to share with you tonight that on September 18th, the USDA announced that the Ohio Farmers Market Network will be awarded a $265,000 grant to facilitate a project that will provide technical assistance and training to farmers' markets in our region, to conducting a market analysis and assessment to develop a plan and strategy for growth, and to develop a region-wide marketing campaign to increase our number of shoppers at farmers' markets. This USDA award to the Ohio Farmers Market Network represents a tremendous success in the implementation of the Local Food Action Plan that was championed by Councilmember Tyson, Franklin County Commissioner John O'Grady, and adopted by this council in November of 2016. The action that this grant represents was one of the very first actions that our structure that we put in place for implementation undertook, and that is our local food board and our local food team, of which I'm a part. And what we identified was that one of the first strategies that had the most opportunity for success was building a farmers' market management network to begin building a strong network of markets that bring food to our communities, but also create economic opportunities for small businesses. The purpose of this action is to create that strong network, but also to build a rural and urban connection, because as much as we would like for all of our producers in Columbus to serve our needs, we must be connected to our rural communities, and we must be able to thrive with them in concert and not in competition. So with that in mind, the local food team at Columbus Public Health led a community-informed planning process to define the objectives, partners, and key outcomes that formed the foundation of this successful grant. Throughout that planning process, it became clear that the Ohio Farmers Market Network was the key partner that could bring this to fruition. With the feedback from the USDA throughout this process, it also became very clear that the organizational structure and capacity associated with our Local Food Action Plan, the local food board that's jointly appointed by the city and county, and the local food team were essential components to this grant being awarded in our community. Together with the $99,000 that were awarded to Columbus City Schools in June of last year for their apple slicer that was installed and went online in September, this represents more than $365,000 in USDA funds that have come into our community since June of 2017 to lead this work. So as we look to this work to increase our resources for our farmers' markets, we only have to look at the pilot season of our Linden Farmers Market to see what a community reaps from the farmers' markets in their neighborhoods. This market, championed by, again, Councilmember Tyson and supported by city council, served an estimated 4,000 customers between July 1st and September 2nd. There were more than 36 vendors, 17 of whom were minority and women-owned businesses, and 10 of whom who were located in the Linden community. More than $3,000 in nutrition program incentive dollars, including WIC, farmers' market coupons, SNAP, produce perks, and Linden Farmers Market coupons, were spent to make the market accessible to those in the neighborhood. We look forward to work with Ohio Farmers Market Network to leverage this USDA funding together with our lessons learned from the Linden Farmers Market and the community's support around the Local Food Action Plan to build a thriving farmers' market network that serves our city and our region. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. I'm certainly thankful for your leadership, and we were one of 49 projects to get this, to get, to receive these dollars. And so certainly, if it were not for our Local Food Action Plan and the team that working with, the whole team, we would not be able to get these dollars. And these dollars are so important to, again, to make sure that our communities have access to healthy food, affordable food, and local food. So thank you for your leadership, and it's just great that we're getting these federal dollars based upon this plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, on October 11th, it is the International Day of the Girl, and there are 1.1 billion girls in the world, and every one of them deserves equal opportunities for a bright future. They are a source of energy, power, and creativity. They can drive change and help build a better future for all. Yet most girls face disadvantage and discrimination on a daily basis, and those living through crisis are suffering even more. This year, the International Day of the Girl will focus on the theme "Empower Girls Before, During, and After Conflict." Every 10 minutes, somewhere in the world, an adolescent girl dies as a result of violence. In humanitarian emergencies, gender-based violence often increases, subjecting girls to sexual and physical violence, child marriage, exploitation, and trafficking. Adolescent girls in conflict zones are 90% more likely to be out of school when compared to girls in conflict-free countries, compromising their future prospects for work and financial independence as adults. Across the world, empowered girls are raising their voices to fight for their rights and protection in all contexts. They are working to end violence against women and girls, to recognize indigenous rights, and build peaceful and cohesive communities. On the International Day of the Girl, let us commit to investing in skills, training, and education for girls, and livelihood activities for young women around the world who are facing crises. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, and again, congratulations on the Food Action Plan and that grant. That's really, we're just very appreciative of your leadership for bringing that to our city. Are there any requests by, or comments by elected officials, City Attorney's Office, Auditor, Treasurer? Are there requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee Ordinance is 2511 and 2693-2018. Recreation and Parks Committee Ordinance is 2533 and 2534-2018. Public Service and Transportation Committee Ordinance 2459-2018. Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 2568, 2580, 2619, 2660, and 2671-2018. Health and Human Services Committee Ordinance 2782-2018. Zoning Committee Ordinance is 2741, 2758, 2760, and 2761-2018.
We have no speakers on the first reading, so the following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read those ordinance numbers into the record?
Resolution of Expression 296X-2018. Finance Committee Ordinance is 2305, 2625, 2661, 2687, 2688, 2694, and 2735-2018. Recreation and Parks Committee Resolution 249X-2018. And ordinances to, for, excuse me, one ordinance, 2452-2018. Public Safety Committee Ordinance is 2552 and 2558-2018. Public Service and Transportation Committee Ordinance is 2513, 2572, and 2632-2018. Administration Committee Ordinance 2579-2018. Economic Development and Small Business Committee Resolution 289X-2018, 2290X-2018. And ordinances 2631, 2706, 2707, 2751, 2752, 2754, and 2755-2018. Housing Committee Ordinance 2634-2018. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee Ordinance 2692-2018. Public Utilities Ordinance is 2369, 2551, 2555, 2559, 2563, 2575, 2615, 2636, and 2648-2018. Appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0274 and 275-2018.
We have one speaker on the consent action agenda, and that's Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins, speaking on ordinance 2634. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Chairman of Sully-Vacman, and part of North Linden area. I just would like to know, what is this money being used for? I know it was broken down from $649.19 to up to $28310.85. Could you tell me how this money is broken down to? But also, I would like to see more money to be placed in this, close to $589,027. So could I get more clarification, what is this money being used for? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Ordinance 2634. In the, one, I will ask the director to follow up with you to get that information. You indicated that you are in support of this ordinance, so if that's all right, we'll have you follow up, we'll have the department follow up and get you the information, but I feel comfortable moving forward since you are advocating support of this ordinance. So seeing no further questions or comments, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions? By voice, I apologize. Clerk, please call the row by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown? Page? Remy? Stenziano? Tyson?
Yes, with the exception of 2692-2018, on which I am abstaining.
President Harden.
Yes, because consent agenda items are passed with the noted exceptions. We will now proceed with the reading of 30-day entailed emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Brown chairs that committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in finance, we have ordinance 2651-2018 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to issue purchase orders with Benchmark Biodiesel Incorporated for the provision of biodiesel and ultra-low sulfur diesel fuels pursuant to previously established universal term contracts, to authorize the expenditure of $1,200,000 from the Fleet Management Operating Fund, and to declare an emergency. A universal term contract, or UTC, was established through the formal competitive bid process last year for the purchase of these fuels. The term of the contract expires next year with the option to renew for one additional year, and the total estimated annual expenditure, as I said, is $1.9 million. Any questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
May I move to Recreation and Parks?
Please.
In Recreation and Parks, tonight, we have ordinance 2455-2018 to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into contract with Greenscapes Landscape Company Incorporated for the installation of street trees throughout the City of Columbus, to amend the 2018 Capital Improvements Budget, to authorize the expenditure of $140,208 from the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. Our tree canopy is a critical component of the city's green infrastructure. Trees improve air quality, reduce the heat island effect, help manage stormwater runoff, and help reduce utility bills by providing shade in the summer and wind block in the winter. These dollars will go towards the installation of 792 new trees in parks and along streets throughout the city, both to replace canopy lost to emerald ash boards and to create new canopy. When you consider together the health benefits and environmental benefits, improved tree canopy is not just a way to make our city more beautiful and more sustainable, but it is truly an equity and a social justice issue. Thank you to the department for continuing to do this good work. Any questions or comments for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
I also have one ordinance and rules and reference.
Please.
I have ordinance 2737-2018 to amend Sections 321.02, 325.010, and 325.012 of the Columbus City Codes relating to deposits and investments, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance will amend city code to permit the city to retain the services of an investment advisor. An emergency action is being considered so that the city can retain the advisor in time for the bond sale proceeds, which are expected on October 17th, which is my daughter's third birthday. Auditor Kilgore, would you like to add further explanation?
Sure. Thank you, Finance Chair Brown. The, excuse me, Rules of Reference Chair, forgive me. So what we're doing right now is, the city has an investment policy that guides our ability to take our treasury investment portfolio and invest it in a variety of securities. The Treasury Investment Board and the Depository Commission are made up of my office, myself, the City Treasurer, Debbie Cle, and Finance Director Joe Lombardi. So all checks and balances are in place. And what we're doing is we're updating the city's investment policy to allow for two things. Number one, the use of an outside investment advisor, so a firm that will be able to work on behalf of the City of Columbus in our fiduciary best interest to manage the city's investments in a manner that is frankly 24/7 and thinking and thinking very strategically about how to preserve our principal while optimizing our investment opportunities. We have to do so within what I call the bumper lanes of very safeguarded investment opportunities. And so what we're doing is, we're matching the city's investment policy with that of the Ohio Revised Code. So it's still very vanilla. It's slightly expanded based upon where we have been here at our city of Columbus investment policy, but we're basically updating ours to reflect the state's, and that will give us a little bit more room as it pertains to, let's say, securities that have come aboard in the last couple of years and so forth. So through the Depository Commission and the Treasury and Investment Advisory Board, we've met, we've recommended these changes, and now we bring them to you tonight for your hopeful approval.
Thank you, Madam Auditor. Any questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
And that's all I have on my committees.
Thank you, Chair Brown. The next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. Councilmember Remy chairs that committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, President Harden. Tonight I have ordinance number 2582-2018 to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract for the Parking Services Division with Kim Lee Horn to create and develop the Strategic Parking Plan for selected neighborhoods in the city of Columbus, to appropriate one hundred thousand dollars in the Parking Meter Fund, to authorize the expenditure of a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and fifty-five cents from the General Fund, and a hundred thousand dollars from the Parking Meter Fund for this contract, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the Director of Public Service to enter into a one-year contract in the amount of up to two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and fifty-five cents for the Parking Services Division's Strategic Parking Plan. The Department of Public Service solicited requests for proposals for the Parking Services Strategic Parking Plan Contract Solicitation, Solicitation Number RFQ 009729. The intent of this project is to provide the city of Columbus Department of Public Service Parking Services Division the necessary parking studies and data tools in selected Columbus neighborhoods to make public parking more efficient and available. Tonight I have Robert Ferens, the Assistant Director of Parking Services, here tonight to provide us with a little overview of this particular proposal, and I'll ask him to step forward and come to the mic.
Chair Remy, Council, President Harden, members of council. I'm Robert Ferren, Assistant Director for Parking Services, and would like to provide some background on the Strategic Parking Plan, the Division of Parking Services newest initiative. I have a little PowerPoint slide to go along with this. The Strategic Parking Plan will be focused on our high-demand parking areas. These include downtown, University District, German Village, Burry District, and Franklinton. Please note that Short North is not included in this list, as city staff is currently in the midst of implementing the Short North Parking Plan, and that will roll out in January. These focus area boundaries are where data will be collected and where recommendations will be made on parking. However, the Strategic Parking Plan will apply to all areas of the city, and recommendations made in this plan will be used in other areas, including Old Town East and other redeveloping neighborhoods. I want to call everyone's attention to the maps here. I'm going to go through each one of the geographic scope areas. First downtown, that's the typical boundary for the downtown area. As we move on to Franklinton, the Sirota Peninsula, we'll be looking at the entirety of Franklinton for the three phases of the plan that I'll get to in a second. Exhibit C is German Village and Burry District. This extent actually goes all the way east of Parsons and always south of Thurmond. So although we're defining these as German Village and Burry District, it does take in a larger area. We've seen parking pressures both go to the east as well as the south of those two areas. And finally, University District, this is one of our largest areas, going all the way from north, north of campus, up to the Short North Parking Plan boundaries. We have three phases for this plan. Phase one is to occur between October and December. We'll focus on existing conditions reporting. The city has never collected and analyzed parking occupancy and demand on this scale before. We've traditionally gone block by block, neighborhood by neighborhood, but never, never to this scale. Furthermore, current parking strategies on a holistic view have not been documented. So currently, we don't always know what, certainly how we're managing parking in certain areas. As you may recall, through the Short North Plan, Short North currently has thirteen unique restrictions. We boil those down to five consistent restrictions. Those are the type of planning process, processes we're going to go through with this plan. Other areas of the city have this patchwork of parking restrictions, rates, and management strategies, and in order to improve access and parking in the city, and to honestly just reduce frustration for our customers, we want to go through this systematic process. After phase one's complete, after we understand what we have in the field, phase two will be parking management recommendations. Based on data gathered and summarized in phase one, the team will recommend any needed adjustments to parking restrictions, including hours of operation, time duration, permit programs for residents and other users, and parking rates charged at our meters. Phase two will also include our community outreach portion of the plan. A task force of community leaders from each of the five focus areas will be assembled to guide the planning process and engage the public at large. As well, strategic focus groups and stakeholder meetings will also take place during the planning process to make sure feedback is received on recommendations made by our consultant team. Finally, phase three is parking demand management tools. The, the team will be paying attention to parking as well as mobility initiatives, knowing that we can't create parking spaces for everybody, we have to think a little bit differently and provide additional access alternatives for folks. Technology will also be of importance in this phase as well, both to respect what type of technology, as well as where that technology should be used. The consultant team, again, is led by Kim Lee Horn. We're excited to have Kim Lee Horn. They've done similar plans in Charlotte, Atlanta, Seattle, and Minneapolis, among others. They will be augmented by hometown group planning next, as well as framework. And again, our expectation is, these three teams will provide the resources necessary to move our city forward with regards to parking and mobility services. The schedule is outlined here. We plan to kick off later on this month in Q4 with phase one existing conditions. We want to get our consultant team on the street as soon as possible while the weather is still good, and while everyone's still in school, and we have normal parking conditions. That will be followed up by phase one and phase two and Q1 of Q2 of '19. We expect to wrap up the plan in summer of next year, and then immediately go forward with first phase of implementation, which will be working with the downtown group on recommendations that come out of the, out of the Strategic Parking Plan. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that council members may have. Thank you.
Do any of my colleagues have any questions? President Protam, Stenziano.
Thank you, Chair Remy. Just, I know there was some task force, but how else will you be engaging in the area commissions and civic associations that would be impacted by the different phases?
Sure. Councilmember Stenziano, we're going to be looking at a task force that is made up of area representatives. So from each of these five areas, we're going to be selecting a resident outreach individual, business, as well as overall community organization. So we plan on building that into the task force, and also having Kim Lee Horn and team reach out to those area commissions. That certainly may not be represented, since it's already fifteen people on the task force. We're not planning on having a big community meeting, because we know that parking is certainly so local, so we're going to be relying on that task force, and also, and also reaching out to certain, certain members of the community, again, business as well as resident, to get their feedback on the different phases.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Assistant Director Ferens, appreciate your time. Seeing no other questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you very much. That's all I have this evening, public service.
Thank you, Chair Remy. The next committee to come before council is the Economic Development and Small Business Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Page. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. This evening in Economic Development and Small Business, we have Resolution 0287X-2018 to accept the recommendations of the 2018 Columbus Tax Incentive Review Council regarding the continuation, modification, or cancellation of all property tax incentives based on the evaluation of reporting year 2017. The Annual City of Columbus Tax Incentive Review Council, otherwise known as the Turk, was held on August fifteenth, 2018, to evaluate the compliance status of the city's property tax-related incentives, enterprise zone agreements, post-1994 community reinvestment area agreements, pre-1994 CRAs, and the tax increment finance districts for reporting year 2017. The review found that the city, once again, exceeded projected and committed job growth and payroll numbers. The Turk reviewed sixty-five enterprise zone and community reinvestment area agreements. Of the companies, two thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine jobs were created, two hundred and twenty-three million dollars in new annual payroll was created, six thousand two hundred and seventy-seven jobs were retained, and over nine hundred and sixty-seven million dollars in real property improvements was invested. The purpose of this resolution is required under Section 5709.85 of the Ohio Revised Code, and in passing this resolution, it means that we will be accepting the recommendations of the Turk. I would now like to ask Director Shonie if he has any additional comments.
Thank you, Chair Page, President Councilmembers, or President Harden, members of council. First of all, this is just a simple step of formally acknowledging our report to council. We will be bringing, implementing legislation for specific recommendations forward individually, probably a couple of them this fall before the winter break, and then we may have some additional ones through the spring, depending on how long it takes us to resolve some of the follow-up questions that the Turk had that they wanted us to look at. I also want to recognize and thank Andrew Dyer from council staff, as well as the auditor, for their participation in the Turk. It is a fairly arduous day of sitting and listening to presentations from my staff on a lot of data, and both of them were very engaged and helpful in their questioning, so I do want to recognize and thank them for their service.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Just, I would back up Director's point. When I was a staffer several years ago, the Turk is a really interesting and thoughtful full day, and, and so thank you to all those who participated in giving these recommendations. Thank you.
There are no further questions or comments. I first like to move to request to amend as amended to the clerk by voice.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, amend it.
I now move for passage as amended by voice.
Clerk, please call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, ordinance passed.
Thank you, President Harden. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Chair Page. The next committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services Committee. This committee is chaired by Councilmember Tyson. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
It's a quick council tonight.
I have ordinance number 2650-2018, to authorize the office of the mayor to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health Bureau of Maternal and Child Health in the amount of five hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars for the Ohio Equity Institute 2.0 program, and to authorize the appropriation of five hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars from the city department's grant fund, and to declare an emergency. The Ohio Equities Institute 2.0 program is focused on the following priority neighborhoods: 43068, 43211, 43213, 43219, 43224, 43227, 43228, 43229, and 43232. Celebrate One, as we know, is the initiative in this city to impact the birth outcomes of pregnant African-American women at risk for preterm or low birth weights babies in Franklin County. These, these additional dollars will propose us to hire five additional community connectors to identify, screen, and refer at-risk pregnant women to clinical and social services and high-risk zip codes in which the connector lives or has lived. It also will add a, enhance its comprehensive system design by hiring an epidemiologist to analyze the data for this work, utilizing other tools such as the fetal infant mortality review for the Celebrate One and its partners to use in quality improvement efforts. And lastly, an additional project coordinator will assist with convening the Franklin County Social Determinative Health Action Team to develop and implement an action plan and policy agenda. And, and I was just reviewing the, looking at some of the data, and it's just, you know, our African-American babies are, you know, the low birth weight is, you know, twelve point one, preterm births for African-American babies are twelve point nine, and so this work is so important, because we want all of our babies to be able to thrive, and that this work with Celebrate One and this, and the Ohio Equities Institute 2.0 is so critical to the overall health and wellness of our, of our mothers and our babies. And that's, again, why the Commission on Black Girls is so important, because these numbers, we cannot continue to move down that direction. So with that, with no questions or comments, if there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all I have on my committee.
Thank you, Chair Tyson. Seeing no further business to come before council, may I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting adjourned. We will reconvene at six-thirty for our zoning meeting. We will take non-genuine speakers momentarily.
Regular meeting number fifty-two will now come to order. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
We will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertain to speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents, three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the city attorney's office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth, and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. Ordinance number 2655-2018 to rezone 7280 Lehman Road, being eleven point five seven acres located on the north side of Lehman Road, seven hundred and sixty feet plus or minus west of Bowman Road, from our rural district to PUD 6, Plain Unit Development District. The applicant is Timothy R. Hen, care of David Ludwig. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval. The Greater Southeast Commission's recommendation is approval. Six, zero, two abstentions. First, I move to amend as amended to the clerk.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Now it's passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2656-2018 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3333.02 AR 12, AR LD, and AR 1. Apartment Residential District Use, 3312.49. Minimum numbers of parking spaces required, 3333.09. Area requirements, Section 3333.11, AR LD area district requirements, 3333.15C basis of computing area, 3333.16 fronting, 3333.22.22 maximum side yard required, 3333.23 minimum side yard permitted, 3333.24 rear yard, 3333.35 EG private garage of Columbus City Codes for the property located at 138 Wilson Avenue, to permit a single-unit dwelling and a three-unit dwelling on lots, reduced development standards in the AR LD Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Bernard Frankel. The proposed use is a lot split for existing dwellings. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Near East Air Commission's recommendation is approval for ten to zero. I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all I have on my committee.
Thank you, Chair Tyson. Thank you, Chair Tyson. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.